The Claire, the council meeting of the 29th of June 2022 officially open. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum session, the meeting is being livestreamed. To start today's proceedings, I would like to ask Mr George Georgakis to read the prayer of council and the acknowledgement of country and affirmation. Could I ask everybody to please stand?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors past and present, the Cabral clan of the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Dara Wur and Darug nations. Affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Prayer of council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the well-being of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision-making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
We'll now play the National Anthem. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. We currently have three councillors who are attending remotely. Councillor, there's a request that we approve them and allow them to continue attending the meeting by that fashion. It's councillor Amun, Goodman and Carnib. And I'd like to move that they be granted permission to attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams. Seconded councillor McNaul. Any discussion? All those in favour? Against? I declare the motion carried. We have no apologies. We have two condolences. And I don't have the condolence motions with me here. But I would like to acknowledge them and then at the next council, next month's meeting to then read out the condolence motions if that's okay with the council. Oh, they're, yeah, they're okay. No, sorry, they are online. The first condolence motion is for James, better known as Jim Simpson. Today, we pause to honour the memory of Mr James Simpson, who passed away last month on the 27th, Friday the 27th of May, after a period of ill health. Jim was born in Queensland on the 18th of November 1941 and resided in Liverpool for 44 years since 1978. Jim was an active member of Liverpool City Council's access committee for over 25 years, as well as a Liverpool transport task force for many years. During that time, he was a tireless advocate for improved access and inclusion for people with disability, older people and their families and carers. As a wheelchair user since 1990 himself, he was particularly passionate about improving footpaths and public transport options. Jim was a wonderful man who loved gardening and was very dedicated to his work with council and the access committee. Jim is survived by his wife Betty, who he married, who he's been married to for 47 years. Jim was also survived by his two sons, Craig and Mark. I will humbly express my deepest condolences to his family and friends. Our thoughts and prayers are with Jim's loved ones during this difficult time. May he rest in peace. The other condolence motion is for Miss Sharon Anderson-Cullis. Today, we pause to honour the memory of Sharon Anderson-Cullis. Sharon was a dedicated environmental advocate and champion of the George's River. With her lifelong dedication for the river, her moniker, Miss George's River, was well-earned. Sharon shared her passion for the George's River as an environmental educator for over 20 years, serving as principal for the George's River Environmental Education Centre. She helped inspire a love of nature and the river in the youth of the region. As a tireless environmental campaigner, Sharon was an active member of many environmental groups and campaigns. She founded the George's River Environmental Alliance in the early 90s. Her efforts contributed to significant outcomes for the George's River catchment, including the Liverpool local government area. This included long-serving involvement with the George's River Keeper Combined Council's Committee. Her recent efforts include campaigning for the conservation of koala habitat along the George's River. On behalf of Liverpool Council, I'd like to humbly express my deepest condolences to Sharon and her family, and our thoughts and prayers are with her loved ones during this difficult time. May she rest in peace. I'd like to now move that those condolence motions be accepted. All those seconded, councillor Green. All in favour? Against? Declare carried. Could I please ask everyone to stand for a minute of silence? Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Our next item is the confirmation of minutes from the previous meeting held on the 25th of May. Do I have a mover? Move councillor Green. Seconded councillor McNaul. Any discussion? Put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare it carried. Any declarations of interest?
Yes, I have one. Mr Mayor, on Conf 06. I am a director on the board of one of the organisations listed. Non-percenary, non-significant, and I'll stay in the room.
On which item was that, sorry?
Conf 06.
Any other further declarations? Well, now move into the public forum, where Miss Kerry Fitzgibbon would like to address council on a DA matter. Not sure if Mrs Fitzgibbon is here. No, well, maybe not. No, I know she's spoken to our manager of DA assessment. But if she does come later, then we'll afford her the opportunity to speak. Next item, I'd like to put forward a mayoral minute.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, before that, is it appropriate to propose an urgency motion?
No, you can do it whenever you like.
Okay, and in that case, I'll propose the urgency motion.
By all means, go for it. What is your urgency motion, councillor?
It should be up on the screen shortly. So the urgency motion is in relation to a letter of support sought by the Sydney Marae Alliance in relation to their West Invest proposal or project proposal. The project is physically located in the Cumberland Council area.
Just before going, why is the matter urgent?
Because the deadline for West Invest applications close as of, I think it's the 27th of July, so prior to our next council meeting.
Well, I'm happy to accept that as an urgency motion, councillor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As you can sort of see in the background, basically, the nature of the project is to develop a Maori cultural centre in the Graystanes area, which is in the Cumberland Council area. However, as you would be aware, we have a significant population of Maori and other Pacific Island communities, or residents within our broader community, and so the value of the project will filter into our residents, and therefore a letter of support is sought from that organisation.
Do you have a seconder for your motion?
Yes.
Seconded councillor Carnib.
Yes, please.
Any other further discussion?
Yes, I might if I may, Mr Mayor. Wonderful, happy to support all our cultures within our area, but I point out that this is not in the local government LGA. And also that is it in, is it going to be assisting Liverpool in developing our own cultural facilities in our own Liverpool LGA? Keeping in mind the visitation precinct where a large multicultural community will be engaged in that particular area, and would we then be in conflict with supporting this in regards for the support for our own submission that we would be making for funding as well? Just a point, and perhaps somebody can answer that.
I'll refer that to our acting director of property, who's Julie Scott.
Through the CEO, and thank you, Mayor. I've actually spoken with the director of community and culture about the matter, and I believe that the director has a position on this.
Thank you. Through the chair, we would like to see a business plan for the proposal, and that's been consistent with all our work that we've been doing for West Invest support letters. But given that it's not on council land, it doesn't impede us as an unsolicited proposal, so that sort of cancels that out when we can't often provide a little support when it hasn't been scoped out in our land and been fair and equitable to all the organisations. We do have a large population, so it does meet those requirements. In terms of councillor, deputy mayor, your question, the visitation precinct's still in its very inception, you know, in terms of master planning. There's no funding attached to that. We haven't done detailed design. Obviously, then it has to go to further detailed design and the like, and getting enough funding. So, you know, we're not looking, we're looking at a few years for that to occur, just to answer that question. Thank you.
Can I ask another question? Sorry, councillor, not about yours, but I believe that a concept plant was funded for the visitation precinct. We found, we had funding for that. Was that correct, or am I mistaken?
Yeah, through the chair, councillor. We do have funding for the master planning, so we were successful in getting some funding to do that work. So yes, you're correct, but that's only at the master planning stage, which is the first inception of this work.
But the master plan will be happening because we've got funding for it.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak in favour of this, if I can. Yep. As has been explained, while it's not in Liverpool, it will benefit members of the Liverpool community. I don't see it as being any different to when we call for support of a metro. Obviously, the metro's not going to run entirely through Liverpool, so, you know, we have representatives that sit on Wesrock, and we quite regularly advocate for things that aren't physically in our LGA, but will benefit our LGA and members of our LGA, so happy to support it.
Cool. Well, I think it's a very straightforward thought. If everyone's happy, I'll put the motion forward. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare the motion carried. We'll now move on to mayoral minute. Yeah, is it two? I think, well, you need, I think you might need three. Division, thank you, yes. Our division, all those in favour, please stand. Are you guys, councillors, are you standing out there?
Yes.
Yes, I'm standing.
Can you turn your camera on?
Yes.
Just kidding, all right. Councillor Amun?
Yes, yes.
Amun?
Amun. Where is Amun here?
No, thank you, everyone. And against? Lovely. Now, for the third time, so, mayoral minute is regarding the YADA, also known as the Young Adults Disabled Association. YADA has been operating from Tenderson Avenue, Liverpool, for many years. In 2019, council received complaints about the use of the premises and issued orders following an investigation. YADA has been in operation since 1985 and purchased the property in 1996 to use as their office and base. YADA supports adults with disability, providing them with services that support their social life and well-being. For some, they are the only social outlets they have. Council has previously acted to change the LEP, Liverpool Local Environmental Plan, in a situation like YADA's. On August 28th, 2020, then-mayor Waller issued a mayoral direction relating to the Burns Outdoor Obstacle Training Centre at 25 Dryer Road, Burnjelly. That mayoral direction required an issues and options report to be presented to council outlining the options available to council to amend the Liverpool LEP to permit with development consent a recreational outdoor facility on the site. Council subsequently resolved at the 30th September 2020 to prepare a planning proposal to amend Schedule One of the LEP to allow the use subject to development consent, and at its meeting on 25th of 4th of February 2021, resolved to approve the finalisation of the LEP amendment. The LEP amendment was formally exempted on 19th of March 21. This mayoral minute calls on council to similarly investigate changes to the Liverpool Local Environmental Plan 2008 to allow YADA to continue to operate from this site subject to development consent. And I would like to move that council directs the acting CEO to prepare an issues and options report to be included on the agenda for the ordinary meeting of the council on the 27th of July 2022, detailing the options available to council to amend the LEP 2008 to allow the use of the site by YADA to continue subject to development consent at Tenderson Centre of Liverpool. And this could be done by an amendment to Schedule One, additional permitted use LEP. And point two, thank YADA for the amazing work that they have done for the Liverpool community over its many, many years, and their particular support for Liverpool Council in that time. Any discussion on the matter?
Yes, I would like to discuss this, Mr Mayor. Totally supportive of YADA, and it's just absolutely incredible that an organisation that has been such a part of Liverpool has ended up into this situation. However, I am cautious of amending the LEP or putting in a request to amend the LEP as it currently is already going to court. But I wonder if you would consider an alteration to the motion, that we direct the acting CEO to prepare an issue and options report to be included on the agenda for the ordinary meeting of council on the 27th of July 2022, detailing the options available to council to assist YADA to continue operations of the work that they do within the Liverpool LGA. That would be more inclusive of different options that might be available to us, or different restrictions that we might have regarding that.
Do you want to just add that as another point? Because at this point, we're just asking for a report to come next.
Yes, it is just a report.
Yeah.
Okay, we can add it as another point. I think that I don't, wouldn't like to see this be hit on the head because of legal complications or whatever. And I think that if we put that in, it's covering our bases. There might be other options available to us.
I'm happy to accept that as a point three. Councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, I had quite a bit to do with what we're, I guess, listing here as the precedent, which is the Burns Outdoor Obstacle Course thing. Very similar thing happened. There's a similar sort of media attention, and, you know, we all got involved and we came up with a solution with the help of the director there. I'm happy to say that Burns are now going strong, and they actually, if everyone watches Ninja Warrior, one of their contestants, one of their regular people that was on Ninja Warrior the other day, so another good story. And I'm sure Fairfield's favourite fan of Liverpool, the deputy mayor, would be very happy to see someone from Rossmawc doing well on Ninja Warrior. So I think it's a similar precedent here. Obviously, there are some complicated, additional complications here in that legal action has already proceeded, but as has been pointed out, we're simply asking for a report here, and I'm sure that report will untangle all of that. I put forward a motion which I thought was going to try and resolve this last month, and it hasn't, but we're still at it, which I think shows that council's intention here is to sort this out in a reasonable manner. And I think both with this and with the Burns thing, it shows that, you know, councillors' hands aren't tied. You know, just because we represent council, we aren't the enemy, and we're actually there to represent the community. And, you know, it's not just up to staff, and it's all staff's problem and staff's fault, that we as councillors appropriately and through due process can get involved and sort some of these problems out. You know, LEPs and zonings and permitted uses aren't perfect, and that's why we do reviews, and sometimes some of these more sort of clunkier examples pop up, and that's our jobs as councillors to sort through them and hopefully get through this one in due course. So happy to support.
Any other speakers?
I just have a question, I just have a question, Mr Mayor. So just to be clear, the initial complaint was made in 2019. Is that correct?
That's correct, councillor.
I'm just, so it's taken three years to get to this point through processes?
I'll refer that to the director of planning and compliance, David Smith. Thank you, and thank you, councillor, through the acting CEO. Yes, so when a complaint is received, it's investigated. And over that period of time, council has been working with YADA to regularise the use. So in relation to the unlawful use, that was ceased, then obviously the duty planning team have been working with them in relation to what could be permissible use on the site. There's obviously some constraints in relation to the zoning, as we've just spoken about, and certainly in relation to the structures that were still ongoing. So obviously, a lot of effort has gone into trying to resolve the issues, including with our city economy team looking for additional sites. And of course, legal action is always the last step that we take, hence the reason why it has been ongoing for so long.
Thank you.
So just, if I can add further to that. So ultimately, do you know roughly when the legal, through the CEO, when the legal action commenced?
Through the CEO, this year, I believe, but the director of corporate may have the exact date.
Just an approximate, yeah.
I think it was earlier this year.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting, and this happened in 2019, I think this is what councillor McNaul was referring to. This, a motion like this could have been put forward prior to this, and the LEP could have potentially amended, which potentially could have prevented proceedings if they obviously had done their LEPs. Yeah.
So just a question on that. One of the things that's sort of been raised throughout this process is, how do we notify councillors earlier that, you know, we're about to go to court, I guess? Because what happens is we get the legal affairs report, it's in arrears, we already know when we're in court, which is too late. Essentially, how the system's operating at the moment is, it's up to residents to know how to navigate the system and know who to contact. And I certainly wasn't contacted about it until about a month or two ago. I don't know if any other councillors were contacted, you know, in 2019 or, you know, before it got to court, but it shouldn't really rely on that. You know, is there a mechanism that we can use as councillors to give us a pre-legal affairs report, I guess, so to speak? But my concern there is obviously gets in sort of legal, sort of grey area, and are we intervening in the legal process? So it's one to take away and think about, I think, but certainly, as you said, legal action is the last resort. So perhaps there's a way to sort of work into the process, a way where councillors can get involved a little bit earlier.
Through the CEO, just to comment on that, I've instituted a review in relation to this matter, particularly in relation to items that have significant community interest or may have significant community interest, and how we can better communicate that to council. Yes, it's an operational matter in relation to the enforcement process. However, there is nothing stopping council from being properly briefed and being made aware of what is happening, so we're not in this position going forward. And so I look forward to briefing the council on that in the next month or so, once I've completed that review into this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare the motion carried. We're now moving to page 55 of the council agenda. CEO 01, superannuation for mayor and councillors. The recommendation is on page 55. Move councillor Hadeed.
Seconded.
Seconded councillor McNaul. Any discussion? Put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? Declare the motion carried. The next item is on page 78. CEO 02, recruitment of the CEO, with the recommendation on page 79. I'd like to move a motion. Point one, that we appoint myself, councillor Caress Rhodes, councillor Fiona McNaul and councillor Betty Green on the recruitment panel. Point two, not accept the tenders as provided in the booklet, and to work with the panel to go back out to market for tenders. The second.
Point of order?
Yes.
The tenders are a different item. It's conf 5 or 6, I think. So I think we just pull that bit out and come to it when we get there.
Okay, sorry, I was reading it as one item, so thank you for that, councillor. Yeah, technically, all upon all, we still can resolve that way if we wanted to. All right, so I'll deal, we'll deal with the, remove that not accepting part, and we'll deal with that as part of conf. Six. Do you have a seconder? Councillor Hadeed. In discussion? Put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands.
Sorry.
Against? Declare carried. Yes, councillor, what was your comment?
Didn't make it in time, but I was going to suggest that instead of four members, you have five. Because what happens is you have two for, two against, you've got a deadlock. Who's going to make the decision? You can't use your mayor or position.
You can't use your mayor or position in that instance.
Yeah, well, I was thinking, yeah, well, let's hope we're not in that position, because I think that's not, it's not, it's not a good starter for that, for that divide at that point in time. But, yeah, point noted. Next item is on page eighty two. CEO zero three, Low Government Remuneration Tribunal and a Report and Determination, with the recommendation on page eighty two.
I'll move it with an amendment.
Yes, councillor.
Just where it has the, from the words period to two thousand and twenty three, if we replace that with remainder of the term.
Yep.
Just a more efficient way to deal with it.
Yep.
Yep.
Seconded councillor Hadeed? Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare carried. Okay. Next item is page one oh three. CEO zero four.
Sorry, just for that previous one, was that unanimous?
Policy and standards. Yeah, I think it was unanimous. I, I'm, I'm just finding it difficult to see what the three councillors online are doing.
Was it unanimous? Yep.
Yep.
Can we record it?
Call it unanimous.
Thanks.
And councillors who are online, if you disagree with unanimous call, please speak up. I'll put the onus on you to let us know if you're okay with that. Next item is on page one oh three. CEO zero four, council policies and standards. I would like to, I would like to move that this item be deferred for a briefing session. Point one. Point two, that the enforcement standard be changed to an enforcement policy effective immediately. Three, amend the enforcement policy to allow this, to allow the CEO to have discretion with regards to court proceedings. I might just ask for some extra wording if I can, please.
Yeah, thank you. Through the acting CEO, noting the first point of that resolution to defer this matter, I don't have an issue in relation to the standard changing to a policy as, as it's worded at the moment, but I would like to have a few, a week at least, to be able to determine appropriate wording in relation to that, which we could certainly then bring back to the council in that briefing session. I've just had a look at the enforcement standard at the moment. It does talk about discretion in here, particularly the guidelines issued by the New South Wales Ombudsman and what the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act says in relation to discretion, which talks about council may, not must. So I think I would prefer if, if the council supports that, to come up with some wording to report to council during that briefing. But there, I don't see as an issue having it as a standard to a policy, just no further changes until we can work through the wording.
Well, what could I say? And I understand that, I think there is, there is a slight element of urgency, but I think we can maybe get, we can achieve both outcomes. Could we, for the, effective immediately, say something along the lines of discretion in legal matters when it comes to community, community groups? And then saying, and then another point saying, uh, is it all delegate to the CEO to find, to, to make the appropriate wording as such?
It's difficult on the fly to try and come up with some wording, but I could just draw council's attention to four point nine of, excuse me, four point nine of the enforcement standard at the moment, that does say when exercising its discretion, this is in relation to prosecution or legal matters, when exercising its discretion to take action, particularly when considering whether to commence criminal proceedings for unlawful activities, council must have regard to whether the public interest will be served by such a prosecution. And then it goes on and talks about the seriousness of defence, et cetera. So we do have in there a requirement to take those matters into consideration. So obviously, it's a matter for council, but I would prefer noting what's been said to be able to wordsmith some appropriate wording for that. We can then certainly bring that back to council in the coming weeks for that, that workshop.
So, okay, so does that mean through the CEO, does that mean that if the current as is, we could provide the CEO enough discretion to potentially withdraw proceedings or defer proceedings that are currently in the court if they wanted to, prior to it coming back to council?
Through the acting CEO, I would need to have that answered by the general council, potentially, given that prosecution proceedings are already in front of the court. Per the previous resolution of council, ultimately discontinuing a matter is a matter for the court. But with that, if it's through the CEO, I would like that answered from legal.
If I may.
I think, I think we'll take that question on notice, but we'll have to look into that. That aspect of, that aspect of it.
Question. Well, let me check the wording. If it changes to a policy, does it need to go out for twenty eight days? Does it need to go out for twenty eight days? Does it need to go out for twenty eight days if we change it to a policy?
I'd have to check manager of councillors, if we change a policy, do we need to put on public exhibition for twenty eight days?
If it's a council resolved policy, I believe it needs to go to public exhibition for twenty eight days. But I will need to probably confirm that. So it's probably something that we need to take on notice.
Well, I think this is unique in that sense that there's not often, that I imagine it's gone from a standard to a policy. So I think that's where, this is where it becomes, where it becomes unique. But I think ultimately, is I think the council expressed a particular view about a particular matter, which I won't go in with at this point in time. And I think what the objective here is that, I think all of councils would like, you know, the way legal matters are dealt with, enforced matters are done differently. So, yeah, if we're going to go with exhibition, yes, we, and we have to, then we will, so be it. My objective in why, why I'm moving this is to say that, well, this is what we can do and we should do something about it. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, Mr Mayor, just some clarity. The item being deferred, does that include the animal welfare policy and standard? That be deferred and we looked at it and get further advice about it?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
So can I just remove the words afterwards, his legal matters, please? Yep. Is there a second for the motion?
Can we change the word effective immediately to as soon as practical? Just to cover off, if it does need to go out for twenty eight days. I just, if it does need to go out for twenty eight days, the way it's written, it's not a legal motion, because we can't do it without going yet.
Yeah, that's fine.
Happy to second.
Seconded.
Move councillor Kineb.
Yes.
Seconded.
Yes.
Any other further discussion? I'll put the matter, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Declare unanimous. Next item is CEO zero five, page one hundred and seven, investment report with the recommendation on page one oh eight. Move councillor Hadeed, second deputy mayor, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare unanimous. Next item is CEO zero six, page one hundred and eighteen, Low Government Annual Conference and Casual Vacancy on the LGNSW Board, with the recommendation on page one hundred and eighteen. Move councillor Green, oh, sorry, councillor Green has a motion.
Yes, if we could have a workshop prior to the closing date for the motions, to discuss the kind of motions that we would like to put forward as a council?
I'll second that.
Move councillor Green, seconding councillor Caliander. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare carried. Do you need the name, the who's, who, the delegates, the voting delegates? I think councillor Caliander offered, well, she'll go as an alternate delegate. Did anybody want to nominate as casual vacancy for, to go on the board?
Just to clarify that motion, we'd perhaps say council determine the councillors to attend or be voting members, noting that councillor Caliander has, is an alternate. That, sorry, that is a possible alternate. That's a possibility.
All councillors, with the exception of councillor Caliander.
No, we're trying. We're trying to avoid that. It's just a possible alternative.
Don't we need, sorry, don't we need two not to go if we only have nine votes and there's eleven of us? Oh, no, one, because you're there, so ten, you've already got one. Yeah, okay, so it's the one.
That's it, voting delegates noting that councillor Caliander has offered to be the possible alternate.
Is that clarified enough? Wonderful. Great. Next item is on page one hundred and twenty nine. CEO zero seven, the endorsement of the Community Strategic Plan twenty two thirty two, delivery programme twenty two twenty six, and the operational plan, including revenue pricing policy, the fees and charges twenty two twenty three, and resourcing strategy. Page one hundred and twenty nine, with the recommendation on page one hundred and thirty, I would like to move the motion on page one hundred and thirty with two Seconders? Slight amendments, councillor Moon, seconded, with two slight amendments. One is allocate seventy thousand dollars to the Moorbank Sports Club netball courts to match their grant that they have, they have received to be funded, and I'll, we refer to CFO, any, where is the best, you need to identify the source of funding for it, or?
Through the acting CEO, it will be from general funds, thank you.
From general funds? To, to hold a workshop in the month of July with regards to the seven eleven contributions with the aim of of coming back to council in the July meeting. All right, just one second note. Sorry, I'm still not, still not finished there for meeting. With making adjustments to this budget. In moving this, in moving this motion, I want to just remind everyone and thank everyone for the journey that we have just been on. It's been a truncated process, which would normally happen after a September election, but being a, we were all declared in December, three, four days before Christmas, and we were in January going through these budget workshops and having to get the council as quickly as possible. Going from a position that we were faced with is that we would be going into administration in eighteen months if we continued on the path that we're on, to a position where council is financially sustainable, where in three years we will back to, be back to a balanced budget. I would have loved to have gone to a balanced budget immediately, but we know that they that would have a lot of pain to do so. But I'm thankful for the work that the acting CEO has done to be able to lead this process, and I want to congratulate him for doing so. As I was pointing, as was pointed out to us yesterday about the CFO, it's the first time we've had a line by line by line going through the budget. And I want to thank you, Mrs Acting CEO, for leading that process. Ultimately, our goal is, we need to be, we're responsible to our ratepayers and ensure that the budgets are managed properly, and because by doing that, we will be able to live in the level of service that everybody requires. One of the great highlights about this budget is that we are, we are able to invest more in frontline services. And I think in the time that I've been on council, I haven't seen any increase of this magnitude of approximately twenty extra frontline crew. I think we did a similar, we did a number of Antenna Fifteen, I think, once upon a time, councillor Harrowback in our days earlier on. But having those extra crew to deal with the growing, the growth of our city is a very big positive, whilst also investing in our DA assessment team, who was under a significant amount of pressure. We all know the growth of the airport, the growth of our city, and that means more DAs and, if anything, a growing workload. So I once again congratulate everyone, congratulate all the councillors for the way that they've approached this, because everyone deserves credit for doing this. And so I want to thank everybody here, here to finance sustainability. So thank you. Councillor McNaul?
Can I just make a comment? Mr Mayor, I'd like to echo everything that you've just said as well, but particularly just to formally thank the acting CEO, Vishwa Earl and their team for the arduous hours that I know have gone into the preparation of this back to basics budget. It's been a wonderful process that has been fast-tracked, I know, through staff sickness and COVID and all of those things, and we really appreciate all of the extra effort that has gone into getting us to where we are today. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'd just like to make a comment as well. In the report, it does say that the Community Strategic Plan is the highest level plan that a council will prepare. It guides all remaining strategies and plans and must be developed by councils, councils with and on behalf of the community. Local government act requires each local government area to have a community strategic plan which is developed and endorsed by council. So I think it's pretty clear there that that's council's north star, at least with the term, if not the next ten years, and it should get appropriate, I guess, promotion and focus. So I'd like to see it, you know, front and centre, on the front page. I know that we did have a hundred day plan, but I think we're now at a point where we sort of see the hundred day plan sort of start to fade back, and what's in the hundred day plan is being incorporated in the Community Strategic Plan, and that sort of gets a bit more focus and a bit more promotion and guides what directors do and hopefully makes their job easier going forward.
Deputy Mayor?
Through the mayor, I would like to just say that the, the thing that I've really liked about this process was the, that the concerns of the constituents were addressed, and that has been the primary process of this budget, so that we are meeting what the constituents say is important. And I think that on that particular basis, this budget is absolutely extraordinary. It has taken in the consideration of the constituents, it's their money, they told us what they wanted, and we delivered to the us what they wanted, and we delivered to the council and pointed out what you were saying, and this budget is a result of that activity. Thank you.
Any other further discussion?
Just ditto everyone, what everyone just said, I don't want to repeat it all in the interest of time, but thank you to staff.
Great, wonderful. Normally, we're tired at night time to do it, but I thought we'd be full of energy at this time of day. Right, that being said, I'd like to put forward the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, and declare it unanimous. Next item is CEO 08, page 141, Liverpool City Council Picnic Day. Recommendation on page 142.
I'll put a motion that council directs the acting CEO to immediately cease the the benefit practice of giving a day off to non-union members, picnic day off to non-union members. As per the award.
Do you have a second or free motion?
I'll second that, ma'am.
Seconded councillor Caliander. Any discussion?
Yep, I'll probably need to speak for it. I think we've heard that, you know, we've got some issues, you know, we've got to look for savings, we're in a tight spot, the whole local government sector is. We've had, you know, three floods, we've had Covid, here's somewhere where we can save money, but not just that, it's also a way to enforce a legally agreed award, what we're simply doing is just enforcing what's been agreed to. The other issue is, as it's currently presented, it actually gives union members an unfair advantage, sorry, gives non-union members an unfair, they get an unfair advantage, and I'll explain what happens, right? Union members have to take Union Day, Picnic Day off, so that's the day, that's the 29th of June, they take Picnic Day, whereas, as I understand it, non-union members get to take a day and leave any point during the year. Now, if I'm a union member and I happen to be sick, or there's a family emergency, or I come down with Covid, or someone near me gets Covid and I'm a close contact, I've got to take the week off and I don't get, I don't get the day. So, as I understand, if that's how it works, I'm being told it doesn't, that that's unfair.
Sorry, councillor Haggerty, can I just get clarified from the staff, is that?
Just to correct one point, if staff are required to work on that day, they'd get a day and leave, otherwise they do take the picnic day on that same day.
Thank you.
All right, but anyway, all we're doing is enforcing a legally, legally agreed to award. I think we've seen a list of councils, it's, you know, right across Sydney, it's a pretty standard agreement, I think there's only three other councils, Penrith, four, Penrith, Hawkesbury, Bayside, North Sydney, with the exception of perhaps Penrith. I think we could say that the views, you know, that when you think of those councils, they don't necessarily scream Liverpool, so if you look at our neighbouring councils, Fairfield, Canterbury-Bankstown, Campbelltown, they enforce this condition, so I think we should as well.
I'd like to foreshadow a motion, if that's okay.
Yes, what's your foreshadowed motion?
I, I will foreshadow a motion in regards to the complications, and I can understand councillor Haggerty's motion, but I think that we also have to consider the challenging situations we are with the labour market in this, in this environment, it's very challenging, we've got a lot of vacancies in council at the moment, and I think that the picnic day for the non-union people has been written into contracts, and it also is a way of attracting the employment and the jobs, to fulfil the jobs that we know that we have to do as a council. So I think there's a little bit more in this that we need to consider, and the motion I would put forward would be that we defer this for a meeting so that we can really think out a way forward for everybody and have everybody on board, so that we are still supporting Liverpool council as a desirable place to work, we address the matter of the contracts with people who are currently employed under those contracts, I think we there that day off. I think these things have to be addressed first, before we actually make a motion, and, and as per councillor Haggerty's. So, that would be the foreshadowed motion, I think that we do need to consider a lot of things about this and work out a possible way forward that everybody is going to be happy.
I'm just slightly concerned, deputy mayor, that, you know, I'm generally concerned about this whole thing because it's on the verge of being an operational matter, but we've had advice on that, but I'm just worried about maybe yours, even once again, it's, we start getting into quite operational issues here, where we talk about employment contracts and how things are going. You know, we've just adopted a workforce strategy, which, you know, is probably the level of involvement that councillors probably should have in matters along these lines. Sorry, allow the sidebar to happen. And once again, I think this is now the third time that it's, that it's come to council, but
Can we defer the motion till further advice from the council management team then? Would that be more appropriate?
Well, I, I think the council management has a clear view as per the, as per the report in the booklet, and not taking words out of their mouth, but the concern that the, the organisation has is that, you know, it's what this does, what this does for the other 65% of people.
That's right.
So ultimately, I think if you, you want to ask them, I'm sure they tell you it will have a negative effect on the, on the organisation, on the majority of the organisation. I say thankfully it's an operational matter, you know, but, yeah. If you want to defer to hear that
On the advice of the council, it is that it is the other 65% of the employees that would be adversely affected by passing this motion, is that correct?
Yeah, I think when you, when you, when you read the, if you sit there and dwell upon this and have a read of it, you know, I think it says it, it says it there. I don't know if the CEO would care to make a comment about the report and the recommendations in it.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I think the report speaks for itself, it really does, we've put a lot of time and effort into it, this is the second time, a lot of resources have gone into this report, we engage with external legal advice, and I think the report speaks for itself, we, as I said, we've put a lot of time and effort into it, so I'll allow the councillors to make a determination on that point.
If you looked at page 146, Deputy Mayor, in the summary, it says, "The picnic day entitlement has been in place at Liverpool council since 2000, at least 2008, there's more to consider than the perceived financial benefits in removing such an entitlement. The picnic day's important employment value proposition, which supports the mental health in general, will be for over 65% Liverpool council employees who are non-financial members of the union."
In view of the council's advice, I'll remove my foreshadowed motion and just make the point that it's council management advice, that 65% of the current employment would be adversely affected by this, and in view of our current situation to attract more people to work at Liverpool council, yes, I'll withdraw my, my foreshadowed motion.
Councillor McDonald, did you have a, were you?
I just wanted to speak against councillor Haggerty's motion, if there's an opportunity for that.
Well, yeah, go for it, yeah, and I'll go to you next, councillor.
Thank you, thank you to the staff for the work that you put into answering the queries from last meeting, I think that there is provision under the local government act, under the award, sorry, and we've seen that in these reports, that we incorporate picnic day in the way that we have done it since 2008. The withdrawal of these benefits has been challenged in other council areas and has not succeeded, and I would like to see us move forward the way that we have been since 2008, we're trying to be an employer of choice, and I think it's a great thing that we have made provision for this for our employees.
Councillor Harrow?
Yeah, look, I'd take the opposite point of view so far, I'm not looking at the financial costs at all, I'm looking at the moral point of view, and the moral point of view is, in my opinion, you have union members who pay an annual fee, quite a substantial annual fee, and for that annual fee, the union members have been able to get working conditions that favour the union members, that's always been the case of unions. I've been a union member as part of the Teachers' Federation, whether I like it or not, I had to be, but it seems here that we're discriminating against union members. The union members who've put in a fair amount of their pay every year for the conditions that they've managed to get, and then they get a day off because of that, that they enjoy as a group, for non-union members to get that, that's skating on the ice of others, in my opinion, and I think that's morally wrong.
Councillor Haddad?
Yeah, well, thanks, Mr Mayor, well, I believe, when it comes to the moral issue, well, I believe in morals, and I am of the point that, on this point, I'm of the opinion that if one of our staff decided to join the union, it's up to him, he can pay the union a million dollars, I've got nothing to do with it, but as a councillor, a governor of this organisation, it's my moral sense, I have to treat everyone fairly. Why I should give a day off for the union, being a member of the union, and don't give an ordinary one who decided not to join the union, treat him fairly and give him a day off as well, but you can't join the union, it's up to you, you can pay some fees, you can get the benefit out of it, it's up to you, but here, as a council, we have to treat our members, our staff, fairly. You give a day off for the union, being a member of the union, and not giving the one who decided not to join the union, you've got 65% of it, how fair is this? I don't, I don't believe it's fair at all, we should treat our staff fairly, one level, full stop.
Thank you, councillor Haddad, can I just ask on that, on that to the CEO, so when the union negotiates an entitlement, does that entitlement go just to union members or does it affect all staff, union and non-union members?
I'll refer that to our chief people officer who's online, Brett Goodridge.
Thank you, and through the CEO, the award sets the minimum standards of, conditions of an employment, and the CEO, as we talked about the briefing last week, has the authority to make provisions over and above what that award actually says.
So through, through the CEO, is that, once again, so if there's a, negotiating the EBA or whatever, whatever goes on, you know, and the union leads a negotiation to a point, does the, the benefit of that negotiation, call it an entitlement, does that entitlement then only apply to union members, i.e. are they only negotiating for themselves, or does that entitlement become a win for the whole workforce or the relevant part of the work?
Sorry, sorry, through the chair, yes, it's for the whole workforce, the local government state award applies to all local government employees employed under that award, whether they're union or non-union members.
And what, if that was an extra day off, then the extra day off would apply to everybody, not just that particular group?
Through the CEO, the award as it's currently structured, the provision of the award as it's written, would only apply to union members, what this council has done over time is use the other provisions of the picnic day part of the award and offered the picnic day for non-union members.
Okay, yeah, I get it now, thank you, thank you.
Write a reply?
Yeah, anyone, does anyone say anything? Yes, councillor, go for it.
I'll keep it brief, the deputy mayor spoke about attracting people to this organisation, here's a start, let's stop sacking CEOs, thank you.
I put back my forward motion, I think that it is obviously a contentious issue, and I think that we need to discuss it further, so I move a forward motion that we defer this matter and we discuss it further and sensibly, thank you.
Do you have a?
Point of order, can we put the motion, please?
Yeah, we can, but there's a foreshadowed motion that's been moved, secondary, is there a second for the foreshadowed motion? You're seconding it, councillor Harrow? No, deputy mayor moved a foreshadowed motion. Councillor Haddad seconds a foreshadowed motion to defer? No worries, okay, so we'll do with the, we'll do with the, the motion as moved by councillor Haggerty first, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against?
Councillor Goodman, against?
I declare, I declare the motion lost. We'll now deal with the, the foreshadowed motion. Just to see exactly what are we now deferring, we can't defer. Yeah, we can't defer. It's gone.
We can defer the matter of the council picnic day, and the consideration of the council picnic day.
We just killed it, the picnic's cancelled, all right, so. Yes, so yes, so councillor, so that motion lapses because we've just voted for that one. Feel free to bring it up next time if anybody wants to. Next item is page 148, Plan 01.
So that amendment lapsed, the foreshadowed motion? The next matter on the agenda is Plan 01, the post-exhibition report, Liverpool Local Environment Plan, 2008, Amendment 84. Would anybody like to move a motion?
I will move as per the book.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? Okay, we will now vote.
Yes.
No discussion, we'll put the vote, all those in favour, we'll show that as being unanimous.
It's a planning one, so we've got to record everyone's vote.
Sorry? Division, okay, all those who voted in, for, stand. All those who voted in favour of the motion, stand. So can we have up the chart and just show that everybody voted in favour, except Mayor Manon, who was not in the room? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next matter, this is on page 161, and it is Plan 02, the public artwork to commemorate the 150th anniversary of Liverpool as a municipality. and it is Plan 02, the public artwork to commemorate the 150th anniversary of Liverpool as a municipality.
Deputy Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm wondering why, or I'm wondering, were there any public community consultations held to do in this issue with the artworks? It mentions council and councillors, but I'm concerned that community consultation hasn't, might not have occurred.
Through the CEO.
I'll refer that question to David Smith.
Thank you, thank you for the question councillor, just to confirm, going forward in relation to coming up with those particular artworks, the workshops being held with council staff and councillors, you would also like to see community consultation? We can certainly organise that.
I have a second question, dealing with the artworks that had been suggested, possible artwork imagery. In terms of the arrival of First Nations people, have we received consultation with either Gannagara or the Aboriginal Consultation Committee as to the appropriateness of those suggestions?
David Smith.
Through that, I'm just getting some advice, no, we haven't at the moment councillor, so we could certainly do that.
So just to clarify, the consultation that we're going to engage in, if this, if a motion is put up in that, in that way, is that going to throw it all open to new suggestions and, or are we going to present the suggestions made in this particular motion? And is that what we're going to engage in the public consultation?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
No, apologies councillor, in relation, may I suggest to close that off? Obviously, point one, this is if council resolves to do so, endorse the Treasure Hunt Public Artworks. Three, direct the CEO to procure an artist. Three, undertake community, undertake consultation, undertake community consultation and consultation with the, I believe you were saying, the local Aboriginal land council.
Well, particularly with the selected artworks that correlate to First Nations. But I think, you know, for celebrating a 150th anniversary, I think community needs to be consulted more widely. It's not just between council and councillors.
Understood, and I'm seeing nodding from staff, so we will certainly take that in, we will do that, I should say.
So can I just, can I just ask, so are we still having a motion on the table that we endorse the Treasure Hunt or are we going back out for, can we defer until that consultation takes place? Because if we endorse an artwork now without that consultation, I think we're ahead of the game.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, look, I move that item, what is it? Is it the Plan 02? Plan 02 to be deferred for next, please, for more consultation, thank you.
Do you have a secondar, councillor McNamara?
So just in relation to, so just in relation to further consultation, is there a possibility of, say, using our social media channels or Liverpool listens in order to do part of that engagement?
Through the CEO, absolutely, that's how we would do that, yep.
Any other further discussion?
Yeah, just councillor Green mentioned the local indigenous community, but I think, you know, it's everyone. You know, we've got some very invested historical societies and heritage groups and all kinds of stakeholders.
Councillor Hagerty, for the Aboriginal community was mainly on the artworks that had been selected for First Nations. So much broader community consultation.
On all the various elements, Margaret Resource Centre, for instance, you know, I'm sure everyone will want to have an opinion on this. So I think, you know, saying that council staff and councillors are the font of all knowledge, no offence to council staff, but sitting in this room this afternoon, I wouldn't back that statement. So, there we go.
Can we say an information session for the councilors and the staff and community consultation? Do we do that one? But this is what I said, this item to be deferred for, for, yeah, further consultation with the community and information session.
The spirit of the motion is captured, the rule. Yep. So where's the original motion, is there a mover and a secondar for it? I don't see a mover or a secondar. Yeah, but there's the original motion, is there, there's no one... Did you move a motion?
Seconded. Ali Karib.
Sorry, yes, sorry, councillor Karib, you were saying something?
Seconded.
Okay, we might not have a mover for that.
All right.
I think everyone's pretty much happy with the second motion? Just to defer?
All right, all right.
Yes, so councillor Goodman.
Okay, yeah, so the motion is the deferral. Great, wonderful. All right, fantastic, okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare the motion carried. Next item is Plan 03, page 188. Page 188, more bank intermodal update on council resolutions.
Move that way.
I have a motion.
What's your motion councillor, deputy mayor?
Okay, the, first of all, I'd like to thank the council staff for all their, for their very in-depth report given back on it. There is even more information that isn't contained in this report that was given at a later date and I can't see that it's been provided to the people or to the public. So there was further information, I thank council for all their work on it. The one point that I feel that we may be getting into some difficulty in view of the new airport is that I can see that we're in a situation that it is time for council, well, I'll move the motions, that council take action to formalise a written agreement with Mickle, National Intermodal Cooperative Corporation and/or Logos for payments made in lieu of rates and report back to the August council meeting on that progress. In view of what is coming to us, like with the airport, we're in the same...
Sorry, deputy mayor, just before you speak for your motion, make sure. Now, in the booklet, it also talks about one, receive a note to report, but it says to not proceed with points A, C, D of norm 03. Do you want that to be as part of your motion?
A, C and D?
Yeah.
Well, they, to receive a report back to the June, they've got the explanations underneath those that the public can now see. They've answered A, C, they've identified the financial accounts and D, identifying mitigation works with projected costings, they've answered that. Is that what you're referring to, Mr Mayor?
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I see your point, it just says, yeah, the recommendation is receive a note to report and to not proceed with points A, C and D of norm.
Yeah, so I'm accepting those answers. But what I feel that it is now necessary for us to do, we didn't...
Sorry, deputy mayor, if you go to page 192.
192.
It's not those points A, C and D.
Yes, I believe that they did answer that in that they're saying that they are not the, they don't have jurisdiction over that.
Yeah, there was that point, if you remember this discussion about point A, about notifying people about their ability, because this was your motion originally.
Yes, that's right. Well, we can put that into the motion if that's what you're saying too, for them to further...
All I'm saying is the staff have said that to not proceed with those points.
Yes, that's right.
So you're happy to, you're happy to stop those points?
We have a legal issue that they feel that they cannot do anything about those points because they are not, from council's words themselves, that they are not, what's the word? They're not the people, the authorising body to be able to take that action. I'm not happy with the answer, of course. And I don't believe that we are not addressing the issue, that it is council's responsibility to look after our constituents. And they're saying because of the, it's a planning matter and they are not the authorising body, then they can't do anything about it. I don't agree with that and, but I will take that up at a further time after legal information.
Sorry to cut in, but can I just have a point of clarification? What is the substantial motion for there to be a foreshadowed motion?
No, there is no, there isn't.
I move as per the book.
Oh, right, 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 sorry.
You moved that, I didn't call it though.
Continue, deputy mayor.
Yes, okay. I just want to move a motion that, and the wording was, that council...
We've got that, so that's all good.
Formalise, where is it?
Yeah, it's all good, that's, we've got, we've got that.
Down the bottom.
I just want to know councillor, on page 189, do you want to take any of those other points, point one and two in the original?
That you feel that we should be getting an answer on those?
I have, I have no feelings at this stage, I'm just...
I'm happy to move the motion as I have, without us not proceeding on points A, C and D at this particular stage until I get further advice on the, on the matter. What I do recognise is that we need to have a formalised written agreement.
Yep.
And...
Yeah, done, sounds good, secondar? Secondar for the motion? I'm happy to second it.
Point of order, question, is the chair allowed to second a motion?
Move, second, speak for, against?
Okay.
Can I ask a question through the chair, I think to the deputy mayor? If that's allowed, do we not still want to capture what the original recommendation was and perhaps add this as a third point to the original recommendation?
Technically not allowed, but it's up if she wants to answer.
Receive a note, the report, absolutely. What I've said about points A, C and D of norm three from the second of February is that at this particular stage, I need to have greater legal advice on it and then I will bring it back to council.
Have we not sent letters to the community telling them about, you can get the noise barriers?
I have got information which is not substantiated at this particular stage, so...
Okay, understood, so, so add the point one, receive a note to report.
Receive a note, the report, and that council take action to formalise the written agreement with Logos and the National Intermodal Cooperative.
Corporation.
Corporation. For payments made in lieu of rates and report back to the August council meeting on council's progress.
Yep.
That is the point that I feel that we should be addressing at this particular stage, particularly with the, with the airport being developed, which of course everybody knows is on a gain Liverpool land and again, there is no formal agreement in there for payment for, in lieu of rates. And at this particular stage, council hasn't been able to provide any substantial evidence of any agreement.
Can I recommend, do you mind if we move it till September? Just mindful that, you know, the agenda cycle is very quick and I imagine this will take a bit of time.
Absolutely, if they feel that they need more time to get in there and start negotiating so that we've got something in writing.
So I think, I think we get the gist of the motion? Any other discussion? All right, all those, I'll put the motion then, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Only one motion's been called. It's the one as moved by the deputy mayor, receive a note and take action to formalise the written agreement. Against, declare it carried.
Unbelievable.
Next item is Plan 04, page 198.
Happy to move that way, but I do have a question.
Review of the Liverpool Design Excellence Charter and Procedure, moved councillor Hagerty.
I will second.
Recommendation on page...
I'll second, but I also have a consideration.
Where's the recommendation?
Yep, my question is probably for the director of Planning and Compliance. I understand that southern districts were required to go before the design excellence panel for a glorified canteen at Ernie Smith. Would the changes to the charter stop that happening? I don't, I think that's unnecessary and I'm not sure what value the design excellence panel can add to a clubhouse.
Thank you, I think I know the DA that you're referring to. That would have been referred to the design excellence panel under point G because it's adjacent to environmentally sensitive land or vegetation. It's not proposed to remove that referral criteria, but as it's a policy of council, council is able to add that to be removed if they so wish. But we're not proposing to remove that as part of these amendments.
In the circumstances, let's say council were to resolve that way, would then, would the, would you then get advice from the urban design team?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, through the CEO, yes, the intention to streamline the referrals of DAs to the design excellence panel has been limited in this review, noting that we still have design expertise within the city design and public domain team. So if it was deemed necessary that something like southern districts would still benefit from a design review, it can be done as an internal referral rather than a referral to the design excellence panel.
Did you want to then make that amendment councillor Hagerty?
Yeah, can we put that in?
Can I just ask a follow-up question?
No, I'm not finished, can we just add those words, yep?
Well, I think it's removing a point G, a point G?
Are we removing point G or amending point G?
Let's, sorry, through the acting CEO, it's a matter for council, but from what I heard, there would be an amendment to point G in relation to don't refer development applications adjacent to environmentally sensitive land or vegetation to the design excellence panel because G also talks about adjacent to the George's River. So if council still would like development applications other than low-density residential development to still go to the design excellence panel, a big development adjacent to the river, you would just remove the last part of point G in relation to ESL land.
Yep, so remove that part?
No. I'm sure there's a better way we can show discretion here. How about we just leave it as it is, as per the book?
Can I ask, can I ask? Could we build into the policy, to councillor Hagerty's point, discretion? There's ultimately that as the, well, the delegate, I imagine the delegate of the CEO, as we delegate to him, that the director has discretion in being able to, yeah, in times of...
You can, so you could put in, because we've got an F under the referral criteria that's about sending stuff to the design excellence panel if it's not captured. I'm just cautious about putting something in there that says that the CEO's delegate could not do something. I'd rather, because then we can get into a, why haven't you sent it to the design excellence panel? It may be better if the council's concerned about small-scale development applications... It may be better if the council's concerned about small scale development applications going to the DEP in relation to ESL. You could tighten up the wording on G, any development for a major new building or major extension, you could put major in there, provides probably a little bit more guidance. No, it's not, no. So.
So could it be for a substantial development above a certain figure?
Through the CEO, you could set a CIV, so capital investment value figure that could define major.
I think the concern is that, you know, with the 16, 1800 applications that are going to come through council, that we're not going to be able, the policy's not going to be able to cover everything, no matter what we do, it's not going to, some will go there when they shouldn't have to, some may not go there, they may miss some, but just providing that, you know, that the staff or the director don't have to come back to council, we can turn around and say, look, now this is something that we can actually use our discretion, you've seen enough DAs in your time, in your career to be able to say, now this is when discretion should be allowed, you know, and I can make a decision on it, because I think as council, we have confidence in you, so I guess, so I guess a broad.
Well, through the CEO, based on that, you could do an amendment to F that talks about the DA manager and the city planning manager has discretion to send stuff to the Design Excellence Panel. You could, we could make a minor amendment to also then saying, where appropriate, if we thought something did not require to go there because of an anomaly, then we can make that decision accordingly. So if it was a fairly small scale that got caught by that, but we look at it and say, well, it's gone to the internal design team, therefore it's not required, that provides that level of discretion that I think you're talking about. So I would make an amendment to F to address that.
The F would say?
So what goes to the panel? Any development deemed by the manager, and you could put full stop after the end of that sentence. Any development that's deemed in the opinion of the manager development assessment to be of minor, of a minor nature is not required, so it can provide that discretion. The difficulty then becomes, of course, correct.
Yeah. So I just, so I want to point out that I was, as council representative on the, one of council representative on the planning panel, the regional panel, the comments were provided that, effectively that we have pretty much delegated, if the panel, if the Design Excellence Panel doesn't, is not in agreement, then the council staff are not in agreement. So it's almost like we delegated completely to them. And when I asked the other panel members, the independents, their view was that that's not how majority of councils work, you know, it's an advisory, not a mandatory. I think we've just got to, I guess, bear that in mind.
Can we, if we had the words minor, can we then just add some kind of interpretation of minor with some controls around that?
Uh, yes, mine's just a clarification, I think you may have answered it David, but I was preoccupied. E, the development which has an interface with significant public space or items of heritage, that is because we have heritage addressed within the DA process itself, that's all. I needed that to be because of constituents' ask.
Sorry, just one further clarification just on that point. Is there kind of a plan B or an alternative course of action if for some reason council at some point does not have a heritage officer or if there is a disputed opinion or disputed assessment on part of the heritage officer?
Thank you, through the acting CEO, if we didn't have a heritage officer, then we would outsource the assessment of that. So there's still a requirement under the LEP for heritage matters to be considered. So we would retain the services of a heritage consultant to provide us that advice. If there's a dispute, I mean, at the end of the day, that can happen now. So if a heritage officer makes a recommendation and applicant doesn't agree, ultimately the delegate of council has to make the decision. So it may very well be the team leader or DA manager, it goes to the regional panel to determine that application.
Any other?
Let me ask a question. How often do we think things like the Ernie Smith situation would come before council? If it's a sort of one off, that may happen once every four or five years, then maybe we just have to suck it up.
We can certainly provide that on notice to council about how many times over the last two years, certain development applications have been referred, under which referral category. There has been a number that have been referred to the panel under that category. It has mainly been major industrial development adjacent to ESL in the Preston's industrial estate. I'm not aware apart from this one, unless the DA manager's aware of any other off the top of his head, otherwise, no, we'll take that on notice, we can certainly provide to council.
All right, let's go, as per the book and take on notice a list of everything that got captured under G and we'll go from there, yep.
You don't want to give discretion?
It then opens up a whole, you know, we wake up one day and there's an ugly residential flat building in the middle of CBD, then go to the Design Excellence Panel because someone.
We've been waking up for the last years to a new one of those all the time.
Yes, yes, so anyway, it just opens up a whole new can of worms. So let's just proceed as per the book and if it needs amendment later on, we'll come.
I could provide some examples, but I.
Oh, so we could go on a tour right now, I could point a few out.
None of the ugly buildings of, of, I think, opportunities where there's been restrictions within the charter and, you know, we can't move.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then it's like, oh, well, yeah, well, we can bring it back to council, right? And then it's.
I'm just wary about giving managers that kind of discretion on major development, it just opens up a can of worms. And I think these amendments are appropriate and we'll see how they go and if we need to make changes, we will.
Could we look at the, so you want the report, you want the report to come back of when?
No, I think just, no, just, it will come as part of the questions we notice in the next month or so, yeah, I'm happy to.
Mr Mayor, can I ask you to put the motion please?
I'll second that.
Remember this, remember what will happen one day? We'll come to the director and say, I've got no discretion, sorry councillors. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against? Declare carried. Just working off, I'm sure vote against it.
I'll move that.
I think I did.
Mr Mayor?
I'll second.
Well, just before you go, just before we go there, whilst we're on planning matters and we're in that headspace, would councillors be interested in dealing with the other planning matter that's in the addendum, Middleton Grange?
No, that's going to take a while.
Next item is COM 01, page 216, recommendation on page 13, move councillor Caliendo.
Question?
Moved councillor Caliendo, second to councillor Hagerty.
Just in regards to matching grants, I note that, you know, we haven't given any money away in the matching grants. Have there been any applications and can someone, I guess, give their opinion on why they think no one has applied for those? And what are we going to do with that money?
I'll pass that on to Tina Bono, Director of Community and Culture.
Thank you, through the CEO. In terms of the matching grants, I'm not familiar with the volume that's coming, if they haven't come to council, it's because they haven't met the criteria, so that would be the reason for that. We have seen obviously a significant drop in all applications with COVID, you know, being the main issue there. Now things are sort of proceeding from normal since February, we've seen to see a spike in more applications coming in. In regards to surplus funds, last year, we put a report up to council surrounding using funds for a delivery at Wild Park, as you can recall, because there were surplus funds there and that was a good community need. Unless at this point, they will just be savings to council and there is no provision to move them in any other particular item that's come forward to my team.
No, thank you.
Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against declare carried. Next item is page 221.
Move that motion.
Tab 14. Perez 01, pothole report. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands.
Sorry, can I just confirm it was me that seconded?
Against? Declare carried. Next item is page 227. Tab number 15, infrastructure 01.
Move that way.
Gomakoi Drive in Humayway, move Deputy Mayor, seconded councillor Hall, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against declare carried. Can I now, I'd like to now call a recess for 10 minutes and see everyone back here at 3.56pm. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everyone, I now declare the meeting resumed. The next item on the agenda is ECD 01, page 231, with the recommendation, tab number 16, propose road closure and potential future sale of Park Gurna Avenue Austral. Councillor has a hand up, councillor Goodman?
Yes, I'd like to move this motion to be deferred to the next meeting, please.
So can you speak up a little bit, please?
I'd like to move this motion to be deferred to the next meeting.
So move councillor Goodman, do you have a seconder? I'm happy to second it.
I'll second it.
Councillor Moon, second it? Would you like to speak for your motion councillor?
No, not really, just defer it to the next meeting, please, my voice isn't coming out much, so I can't really talk much.
Just, we deferred it last month, I just need some reason as to why we're deferring it. You know, we were elected to make decisions, not defer things, so I'm a bit concerned about deferring it again.
I think the council's having physical difficulties expressing his opinion as of his current health situation.
The actual school's been calling me to meet with me and I haven't been able to meet with them due to the, due to my health, so either with defer or I'd like to vote against it, against closing that road. I'd rather support a community organisation than support a developer at the moment.
As long as we're able to make a decision next month.
Pardon?
Yeah, definitely, I agree with that.
All right. All right.
Questions?
Councillor Haggerty, yes, question?
Yeah, well, just a question, did we go through the community consultation regarding the closure?
Not yet, no.
Not yet?
This would be part of the process.
So why don't we go, you know, through the community consultation in this regard?
I think all the council's asking for is four weeks, four weeks to defer the matter and nothing's going to change too quickly in that timeframe.
Okay, but still, the question is, did we go through the community consultation in this regard to close this street?
I think that'll be done after it's voted again with.
Yeah, that's part of the process.
What I believe, before we do, before we do any decision in this regard, are things we should go through the community consultation to have some sort of feedback from the community if they are in support of the closure or not.
Would that be acceptable, that included in that, that the matter be deferred to allow council to consult with the community?
Yes, thank you councillor Haggerty and Deputy Mayor, I don't think that's wrong either. So we won't be voting with or against the motion, but we will go to the community and see what they think of it, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right, defer it and allow council to investigate what the community thinks about it all.
The thing is this, it's not really, it's, and I drive past there almost every day on my way to my kid's school, it's just dirt at the moment with a bunch of new homes nearby, so it's actually not even a road in itself. So it's, yeah, it's, I guess, it's neither here nor there. Council, I think we should just support the deferral and we make, as long as we make a decision next month and just move on.
Agreed with that, thank you, Mr Mayor.
All right, no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against declare the mayor carried. Next item is ECD 02, page 239.
Move that way.
Tab 17. Government grants and funding, moved councillor Hagerty.
I'll second.
Councillor Hall. Any discussion?
I have a question. The, this is fantastic because this was from a motion that I added to, or item I added to a motion, that we really do need to get on the front foot and try and get as much funding as possible. The question that I have is, have we created a new department for the getting of funding and grants or how has that been done? Is it a new team that we've put together or is it using existing staff and just a little bit more detail about how it's been set up?
I'll pass that on to the acting Director of Economy and Commercial, Julie Scott.
Through the acting CEO, thank you councillor, what we've done is actually redeployed existing staff from my team in City Economy. They're specialist staff actually looking after initially the Western Best Funding Programme and when that particular programme is closed, we will then move that staff into actually doing more investigation in terms of grant funding and partnership opportunities.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes councillor Green?
If we're talking about existing staff, then what's the $500,000 been set aside for? If the idea, the concept was to have especially skilled people writing the grants and we set that money aside for that purpose, then I don't understand why the $500,000 is there if existing staff are already doing the work.
So some of that money goes towards bringing in specialist contractors to help us put in the technical detail and technical specifications of our writing of our grants and some of that funding goes into that. And I'll pass on to Julie Scott again to elaborate a little bit more on where the other funding goes to.
Through the acting CEO, so we have generalist staff who are playing almost a coordinating role, so they're very much about the concept, putting in the actual proposals and then the evaluation. We do, as the acting CEO said, we do need specialist staff, specialist consultants and often advocacy groups that we do need to pay for their time and that what the extra funding would be for.
And then part of that funding be set aside for specialist training for existing staff to attend around grant writing, to expand their skills, build the skills within the organisation, if that's what you want to do.
I think the intent of why the motion was put forward and what we've all been trying to achieve out of this is not necessarily about grant applications, because we have someone who does that already, but about probably more government relations, you know, so getting 15th Avenue upgraded is not really a grant or the bypass, so more that bigger, that people who can go and work their way through the government offices and stuff. And I think the reality is we don't have that skill set within the organisation. So I think if that could be incorporated of how do we bring in that new skill set, you know, and using the externals, internals and build our capacity as an organisation, I think that, and training could be one of those elements, but I think, yeah, we've got to get some new positions as part of it. I think, can I refer to us, is that, I guess, the intention of this or can that be covered within this?
It's through the acting CEO, that's exactly right Mayor, so apart from the grants, the team is actually called Grants and Partnerships, so that includes things like government relations, working across both federal and state government agencies. There's a high level of advocacy, a high level of having to really negotiate with ministers and minister staff and not always, we don't always have the skill set within council to do that. So sometimes you do have to bring in specialist consultants to do some of that type of work.
Just if I may, just another question. Through this team, are they operating for all grants for the whole of council? So we've got all the grants processing going through the one place at council?
Through the acting CEO, that's correct Deputy Mayor. Through the acting C E O, that's correct, deputy mayor.
Right, councillor Hagerty, question?
Yep, so I know that there's five hundred thousand dollars allocated. My understanding was that that was essentially a number plucked out of the air by the person that moved that motion. It'd be wonderful to be a director and be given half a million dollars, but, you know, do, do you need, do you need half a million dollars or, you know, would you be able to still achieve that with a smaller envelope of funding and perhaps we save some money there for other things? I, I just, I go back to the original decision, which was just a random number that the deputy mayor came up with, it's a lot of money, we keep talking about, you know, fiscal responsibility. Yeah, could, could that be done with a smaller amount of money?
I think, I think the reality is we needed a million dollars. And I'll give you an example, just on one report, Parramatta Council invested a million dollars back in twenty thirteen on a report which a lot of people laughed at. It was called, Well Bringing A Light Rail Into Parramatta. People laughed at it, why would you want light rail in Parramatta? Why spend a million dollars? That one million dollars has now led to a two billion dollar investment in the government, uh, funding the government, putting light rail in Parramatta. So the reality is, uh, the things that we need, fifteenth avenue, Brickmakers Bypass, Metro, the billion dollar projects, um, aren't going to just fall on our lap if we don't spend the money behind it. Uh, and I think we, you know, this is a start. Um, and you look at what we spent on other things, we've just approved a budget. It's been our recommendation and I think that we should be looking at, yeah, putting, putting more. That's my two cents into it, if anybody else wants to add to it.
So vital infrastructure is funded on how much money we pay consultants and not on a needs basis?
No, it's about building, it's about building a case for it, you know what I mean? Yeah, could you argue that Parramatta need a, is what's more important? The Parramatta light rail or two billion dollars to Metro from Bankstown to Liverpool? Well, I would argue the Bankstown to Liverpool Metro. But it's, you know how it is, in a democracy, it's complete, it's, uh, loud views and, you know, who expresses an opinion, the vision? The government bought into the vision of Parramatta, you know what I mean? Once again, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, Parramatta was still fighting to be that city and what they've achieved in the last, in that timeframe, i- it has been amazing because they've, they've done, they have, they've had a very attacking advocacy programme, which I think we need to be replicating and doing even better for that. So having stats and figures makes a big difference.
Can I perhaps, uh, suggest another point be added to the, uh, motion? That, um, we, we receive, I don't know, on a monthly basis, a report from the, uh, from the, uh, the new created Grants and Partnership Team on, uh, all grants applied for and, uh, and success. I think that was a part of the previous motion, but if we could just put that back in, uh, so that we can see, uh, how, how we're going on it.
I think, I think you should be mindful, deputy mayor, that's a, creating a significant amount of workload.
Sorry, I can't hear they're talking.
I'll say, I think you have to mindful, that's can create a significant amount of workload on one particular department, as you know, you can ask out of the two hundred plus million dollars we've just, uh, approved, you know, uh, we're not asking for monthly reports on each one of the deliverables and that, in that area and what they're doing for that money.
Happy with quarterly? Happy with any report?
I think as part of our quarterly reports that come through, that's probably more realistic. Yeah. Plus these things are slow burn as well, a lot of them are.
At least we'll know which ones we've applied for and what they were.
Can I suggest then, it, it gets included in the quarterly budget review? There you go, in an existing process, nice and efficient. We're not creating extra work, we're not wasting half a million dollars on preparing reports about what we're doing with that half a million dollars. Thank you.
Yep. Everyone happy with that?
A quarterly basis in the what, the budget review?
Or in a quarterly basis and the staff will do, let the staff do their thing, you know what I mean? Alright, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those have favoured, please raise your hands. Against declared the motion carried. We now move into the committee reports, traffic committee to start off with.
Yeah, um, I, I'll go first. Um, just on the closing of Flynn Avenue, which I think is item number nine. Uh, there are differing views on this one. Um, I know previously we deferred it because essentially fifteenth avenue is a car park in the morning, it needs to be upgraded to at least two, two lanes each way, we know this, we've been lobbying for it. Uh, and, uh, I'll keep lobbying for it. I've noticed that Cow Pasture Road's gotten a lot, a lot worse too in the last month or so. Anyway, my point is, uh, that provides an additional way for people to get in and out of Middleton Grange. Um, and, and there's a view that it should stay open until additional, uh, traffic works around the area, uh, undertaken, I agree with that. There's also an issue that for the people that live up the top towards, uh, the hill there, uh, there is a speeding problem. My understanding is that traffic committee has approved, um, some speed humps. It just takes a very long time for a crew to go out there and put a lump of asphalt down for some reason. So, um, there's also an issue with dumping. So, um, I, look, I'm happy, I'm happy to leave Flynn Avenue open as long as we get these speed humps in as soon as possible. I don't want to be here in six or twelve or twenty four months going, where are these speed humps? Uh, so I don't know what kind of wording I use.
So I would probably say, um, doesn't approve the temporary road closure, da, 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 and then, uh, ensures that the traffic calming devices as approved previously be installed immediately.
Let's go with that and see if that works.
Mitigation devices. Bit more technical. Yep. Or traffic calming. Alright, any other discussion? Put the motion, all those have favoured, please raise your hands. Against declared carried. Budget review, order in risk, you want to do them together, any issues?
Happy to move it.
Are you happy to move both of them?
Uh, the, yes.
Yep, so we'll move, uh, committee two and committee three. Move deputy mayor, second councillor Hade, any discussion? Put the motion, all those have favoured. Against declared carried. Questions with notice? Does anybody have anything to say out of any of the questions with notice?
Uh, so my one, question one, happy with that. Question two, or Q and O two. Part two of my question wasn't answered.
Can I just let, uh, the C E O get back to you about that?
Yep, can I get the date? Well, how about I put it this way, can I get the date that the payment was made? Were you up that date?
Yep. Sure. Anyone else have any questions for the question with notice?
Uh, no, I'm happy with mine, happy for the report to come back.
Sorry, yeah, can we go through them one by one, please?
Where were we then?
Happy with question three.
Question four?
Uh, just on question four, I, I'm still perplexed about this one. Um, I've been championing this initiative for a number of years and I get lots of requests about, um, putting streets on that list and people every so often go, what's happening with blah, blah, blah street? And I said, it's on, it's in the queue. We, in July last year, we, we set what the queue was, that was the forty two streets and there was a, an order of priority. I just find it extraordinary that a street that wasn't on that list gets it done within a few months. Uh, and the only thing I can put it down to is the fact they're on a current affair, so I guess, you know, do I, do I tell residents, hey, if you want something done from council, call up a current affair? Uh, because it would appear that the usual processes don't appear to work in certain, certain circumstances, so um, I find this, this extraordinary. Um, and, uh, unacceptable.
Alright, um, councillor, can I, uh, shall I, I have to, I have to read the code of media, I can do a code of, do a, um, uh, point of order on you, uh, on a councillor? I'm not sure about that, but in lieu of that, I think, uh, casting aspirations on staff, is probably not viewed in a positive light. Um, and can I maybe recommend that you maybe, um, withdraw or re, and reword your statements, please councillor?
I don't know what you're referring to specifically, but I'll withdraw whatever it was I said.
I think specifically it's about saying to staff, yeah, you know, go on a current affair and why it happens and so on and so forth is, uh, you know, sure the staff, staff have their processes, but yeah, to say that they're, um, or why they do things, I think it's, uh, we need to be respectful of the staff.
Alright, I'll withdraw that. Um, but, um, yeah, I'd like to think that, um, we see the, the ones listed here in that order, delivered in that order, uh, on behalf of residents. Thank you.
Number five, councillor Green?
Yeah, I have some questions, um, particularly in relation to Starry Sary Night. Uh, the first paragraph, uh, in the response says that all major events and active activations that impact streets or pedestrian flow in the Liverpool City Centre are brought to the attention of the council's transport management team and subsequently passed to the traffic committee. This is a requirement regardless of whether the event is internally or externally managed. And then the bottom paragraph talks about events such as Starry Sary Night, New Year's Eve and Australia Day all undergo the same process internally and are presented to the traffic committee as required or deemed necessary. But that statement seems to contradict the first paragraph. But as a member of this, uh, traffic committee for the last four years, um, and particularly over this year, um, I have no recollection of Starry Sary Night even coming to the committee. I checked with my fellow councillor Peter Hall, who is also on that committee and that, uh, Starry Sary Night didn't come to the traffic committee prior to the event. Um, and which is extraordinary given the significant traffic disruption that was caused on the Friday night that resulted in a virtual gridlock of the, uh, C B D in every direction. So I'm just wondering why did Starry Sary Night not come to the, uh, the, the traffic committee? And, um, you know, who was responsible for the traffic and flow and management on the Friday night? And given the significant disruption that occurred, it really concerns me that no public apology was ever issued.
Councillor, I'll pass that on to the director of community and culture.
Thank you councillor, through the chair, um, I've got Clara, our events lead here, and she'll answer all the questions that have been raised in, on the matter around Starry, if that's okay Clara, do you want to come up?
Turn it on.
Press the button, yep.
Hello councillor, first timer. Um, the traffic management for Starry Sary Night went to the April committee. Um, it was in consultation with the traffic management team within council, they oversaw the T M P since February. We were working in conjunction with them, um, and it's in the minutes of the April, um, committee meeting.
That might be a reflection of councillors passing committee meetings minutes without reading them or being there.
I have, I was at that meeting in April, I have no recollection of it coming. I also emailed, um, when councillor requests to Charles Waif, because usually he sends through the dra, the draft minutes of the traffic committee and I'm yet to receive the draft minutes and I can't find them in my system, but I definitely attended that meeting, I remember we talked about, uh, the Festival of Chariots and we talked about the squadron, um, Moorbank Squadron. Uh, but I have no recollection of Starry Sary Night coming to that, that committee meeting.
Through the, um, C E O, councillor, if I can, um, take a, a moment offline to review, but I, um, I was told as well that it had gone through the meeting.
Can we please check on that, councillor?
Do you have a?
With, with all due respect to, to all of the people who are at that, on those committees, um, as I say, I'm on the committee too. I was asked about it, I don't remember it being discussed. Normally what happens with those sorts of discussions, the police get involved. Uh, Damien is the representative and I, and usually they talk about, and I do not recollect any conversation relating to that, to be honest, but my memory may not be that good.
To be honest, um, and I'm so sorry, through the chair, um, councillor, I wasn't at the meeting in attendance, so I am basing this on what I've been told in record. Um, and I'd love to review that and be able to, to inform your councillor.
Because usual practice is, we would get a map. It would be attached to the agenda and we would get a map and talk about what roads were being closed and if, uh, transport needed to be diverted. Uh, or, and, and really, um, for such a significant event as what it was and the road closures that were involved, I, I'm surprised, I, I'm, 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 but I know for a fact that, that, um, I, that did, I have no recollection of such, uh, such a conversation, but I can remember all about the chariots, of chariots and about the squadron, the air squadron, but, um, Starry Sary Night is completely blank.
Councillor, we'll take that on notice, so, and then we'll look into it and come back to all of you, so, thank you for raising it.
Okay, well just, can we make sure for next time, any events, in advance, you know what I mean? Just put the issue on traffic committee. If, if any event will cause a disruption of the traffic in the area.
Absolutely.
As simple as that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, next one, uh, question number six. Councillor Rhodes?
Sorry, happy to wait for that, uh, report to come back to council, it's good that it's being actioned, that was, uh, suggested I think in two thousand and seventeen and it is a, a revenue gaining exercise for council if it is possible, so happy to wait for that to come back.
Councillor Callahan, uh, yeah?
Can I ask some questions about that, I mean, I wasn't around then. Um, but I, I'm just, I'm just wondering, um, has there been any community consultation? I mean, I'm, I just wonder in terms of, you know, a space like that, how it would work and particularly, um, you know, what parameters there are in terms of long term camping on that site, uh, the propensity or possibility for antisocial behaviour once it's set up, I mean, I'm surprised, I thought, I wondered if Liverpool suddenly had become like the Coffs Harbour between, um, here and Melbourne as a, a popular stop off point. Other users, yeah.
If I might respond to, to that, as I am the councillor that, uh, moved that motion originally. Um, what it is, is that, uh, it has been noted through the various tourism, uh, conferences that, uh, there is a growing number of people who are choosing to take holidays in recreational vehicles. And, uh, there is the possibility of land that is not being used by council to be utilised completely at their expense, they do all the infrastructure, they do everything, there isn't any cost to council. What council benefits through it is by increasing the visitation economy. We've got people staying in Liverpool and then buying their petrol, uh, buying food. Uh, that is the basis of it. So it's just to take advantage of a, uh, a practice that is being used by other councils and the basis of it is to increase the visitor economy within, within a area. Well, that's what they're going to bring the report back to us councillor.
I, I believe this issue has been raised a long time ago.
Yes.
Last year, in regard of the Caravan Park in Liverpool.
Two thousand and seventeen, I think.
I believe so, I'm still waiting for a report.
We haven't had a report back yet, this is the report they're bringing back.
That's exactly what I said, we're still.
Yeah, on the report for it.
Okay, would you please just move up there, do you know the meeting?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I also have, uh, a question just in relation to that one, um, I know.
Sorry, I also have a question just in relation to that one. I know, you know, the intention is obviously to kind of look at tourism and increasing that locally, but have we done, have we had a look at this in the context of like a regional needs assessment?
Yes, absolutely, that's what the report is about. So if we wait for the report, and then we can have a further discussion about the merits of it or not.
And when is that coming back to council? Is that, is that in here?
December.
Oh, December, yeah, sorry.
The questions should be asked now. This issue, it's raised years ago, and what reason behind, we haven't received any report yet.
The question about the report while we haven't received.
Sorry, deputy mayor, the questions to the CEO, through the mayor.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
I'll repeat the questions again, Mr Mayor. The issue of, of Caravan Park, we see in Liverpool LGA, it's raised 2000 and?
Seventeen, I think, but I, that's just guess.
Anyway, last term, years ago, and we're asking for a report to come back before the councils to look at it. So we're still waiting for the report. Any reason behind this issue hasn't been received yet?
I can only presume that the reason has been covered.
Sorry councillor, the question to the CEO, through the mayor.
And also, I raised it again with them, which may have reignited it, only last year, I think, to give that report back. So I asked for the report.
Or a further question to the CEO. I can't really answer that question right now. I'd have to look into that and come back to you as to why.
Fair enough, thank you.
All right, next one, question seven, councillor Caliander.
Yes, I note that the responses are coming back on the 27th of July. The only additional thing that I'd like to add to that is, at a previous council meeting, there was discussion of a sort of staff culture survey, or something to that effect. And so whether that has been conducted and what the results of those are, if that can also be included into that response.
I'll note as well that a lot of this, one of the good things that came out of the Eric meeting is that a lot of this is discussed, maybe not in this fine-grained detail, but generally speaking, it's discussed.
Yeah.
Okay, well now move on to the addendum. Plan 05, Middleton Grange, proposed planning agreement Middleton Grange Town Centre. I'm happy to move the recommendation on page 1433. Do you have a second there?
Happy to second.
Second deputy mayor.
I have questions.
Yes.
I sent a bunch of questions to the director of planning, and he responded in time. Thank you. So, couple of issues. One, it's very detailed, thank you. Still not entirely happy with the response. So I guess, first point is, they've removed Park Three, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, but essentially something got taken out and we didn't get anything in return. Is that right, or I'm not reading it properly?
Through the acting CEO, I'll have the manager of city planning, Ms Kakish, to answer questions on this item. Thank you.
Through the acting CEO, councillor, you would have seen in the response, we called up clause five and six, I think, of the amendment, number 63, which stipulates the development requirement of Park Three. So as an outcome of that amendment, we put forward to the proponent to remove Park Three from the VPA, as the VPA is purely a funding mechanism to deliver necessary infrastructure for the development, but we didn't deem it as being necessary, because the amendment clearly outlined within the subclause five and six, the requirement to build Park Three for the purpose of a public park.
So the public is still getting a park, is essentially the?
Correct, and that is very clear in the now LEP.
All right. Okay, I get that. Now, my other issue is just in regards to intersection B. So to give everyone a bit of background, I think the original road plan was that Middleton Grange would sort of come diagonally through the site. The road plan's now been changed as a grid. There was going to be a Middleton, so where Middleton Grange now meets up with where Middleton Drive was going to be, there's another road, except that road's now five metres over. In the VPA, they've agreed to do intersection works. That's now come to traffic, traffic committee twice. Traffic committee has twice said, go away and have another crack at that, because it's a very dangerous intersection. You've basically got a T-intersection, and then the main road in and out of most of the suburb, Middleton Drive, sort of two or three metres over. In my opinion, it'll be a dangerous black spot. In the VPA, there is an agreement to upgrade the part of the intersection, the T-section, but not the Middleton Drive bit. Now, in reading the response, I guess what it's saying here is, that's not part of the intersection, therefore it doesn't need to get upgraded. So in future, if I'm proposing to do a development, and I've got a VPA, I just basically move a road three metres over, and I only have to do an upgrade into a T-intersection rather than a four-way intersection. Is that correct?
Through the acting CEO, before I just have the manager answer that question, it's important to note that a development application is still going to be required for the Middleton Grange Town Centre. So I acknowledge the point that you're making in relation to the broader traffic considerations, and our view is that appropriate conditions of consent are likely to be included as, and I think in my response to you, we spoke about a cost of the development. So there's a lot of conditions of development consent that are put on that aren't necessarily covered off in a planning agreement. What we are doing in relation to the specific issue about the traffic committee's concerns about traffic safety, is working with the proponent on that issue, and we are hoping to have a resolution of that issue while the draft VPA is on exhibition. So it still enables changes to be made, i.e. potentially removing the term roundabout to an appropriate intersection treatment. One of the issues, of course, is our preference would have been traffic signals, for instance, but we have to go through a warrant assessment with Transport for New South Wales, which takes time. So that's why the VPA as a draft says roundabout, but we also acknowledge that the traffic committee has raised traffic safety concerns. So it's not locking it in at the moment, it's going on an exhibition process, and staff are working with the proponent to refine the actual wording of that. Ms Kakish, is there anything further that you want to add to that point?
Yep, through the acting CEO. The VPA is much like a contributions plan, where we may capture the higher level of infrastructure to be delivered. That doesn't prevent council from conditioning infrastructure required as a direct nexus or outcome of the development through a development application process.
Essentially, well, you know, if necessary, we'll condition it to the DA. And lastly, I think the planning proposal has deferred commencement based on a bunch of things being done. Does that include these things, or different things?
Ms Kakish, do you want to answer that?
Through the acting CEO, there was only one reason as to why it was deferred, and that was because a funding agreement or mechanism was not in place at the time the plan was made. So it was deferred to enable council to develop a funding agreement or mechanism, which would have been either a VPA or a CP amendment, within the six months that was provided by the department.
Okay, so the way, oh, maybe I read it wrong, but the way I read it was, not deferred commencement on the delivery of infrastructure in the area, not deferred, but it's, you're telling me it's deferred commencement on a funding agreement with council? So that if this goes through, then they can get the bulldozers out effectively?
Through the acting CEO, the plan has been deferred in terms of its commencement. So if you go into the legislation website and look up the Liverpool LEP, the updates won't be made until the first of November. So that means the new land use planning controls won't be in place until the first of November. And if we didn't have a funding mechanism in place by that time, the department could resolve to extend that time, or they may not. So it would be at the discretion of the department. But the deferred commencement reference is effectively a deferral of the commencement of the amendment to the LEP.
Would not then the potential contributions plan kick into place if we don't adopt the VPA?
Correct.
Through the CEO, absolutely. So in, in our, in the report, it does say, if council did not endorse, for instance, a planning agreement, we would be recommending to council that we would progress with a contributions plan amendment to enable satisfactory arrangements to be in place for infrastructure.
Any other further discussion? Well, if I can top my, write a reply, all I can say is, I look forward to seeing these, as a resident of Middleton Grange, I look forward to seeing traffic queues that don't go for 35 minutes a peak hour to get out of the area, and looking forward to this infrastructure upgrade, and what the community building capacity of this town centre does have that everyone has been waiting for. So, thank you. That being said, I put, I put forward the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare the motion carried.
Mayor, can I be recorded as voting against?
Yep, you too councillor Haggerty.
Same.
Next item is, we have a presentation by councillor Green, who would like to make a presentation on behalf of the Aboriginal Consultative Committee. Councillor Green.
Mister Mayor and my councillor colleagues, I rise to make this statement in my role as co-chair of the Aboriginal Consultative Committee, and as an action from the unanimous motion of the committee passed at the recent June 2nd meeting. On the 6th of August 2021, the committee resolved to write to geographical names board, raising objection to the government announcement to name Western Sydney Eritrepolis City as Bradfield. Also, in the same month, from a notice of motion put forward by councillor Caliander, council resolved to prepare a submission to the geographical names board, expressing council's preference for the naming of the Eritrepolis City to better reflect our local community, and that the New South Wales government extensively consult with local First Nations community on the naming. Correspondences were duly sent by the former mayor and chair of the Aboriginal Consultative Committee, and council submission by the former CEO. On resumption of the face-to-face meetings on June 2nd, in following up of this matter, committee members were informed that no formal reply had been received by council from either the committee's letter or council's submission. I am advised to date, the only response council did receive on the matter was an automated reply thanking the committee for their submission. On behalf of the members of the committee, I convey to you, Mister Mayor and my fellow councillors, the deep disappointment of committee members, of the absence of any formal reply, or response of any description being received by the committee in relation to the council, to the committee and all the council's correspondents raising objection to the naming Bradfield. On behalf of the Aboriginal Consultative Committee, the former mayor wrote, "The land on which this city stands has a rich First Nations heritage and culture. The Durrey people are the traditional custodians of the land in this region. The Aboriginal Consultative Committee urges the geographical names board to reconsider the selective name for the city, and instead honour the region's rich First Nations heritage and culture. Failing to select a name of First Nations cultural significance for the Eritrepolis is a missed opportunity. Further, it demonstrates a lack of understanding of the significant impact such a choice would have on Western Sydney, New South Wales, and indeed the entire nation's effort to support and encourage reconciliation." These words, I believe, stand as central to the expressed objection and the deep disappointment of the committee members that I am conveying to you today. Therefore, Mister Mayor's Chair and my fellow councillors, I petition you that the disappointment of the committee in there being no formal reply, or response, or acknowledgement of previous correspondents objected to the naming of the Eritrepolis City be taken up by this council. I also respectfully submit the following, that firstly, council communicate the lack of respect in the failure of the geographical names board to provide any formal response to the Aboriginal Consultative Committee correspondents expressing their objection. And secondly, in going forward, that council make written representation to the geographical names board, the New South Wales Minister of Aboriginal Affairs, Mister Ben Franklin, the Commonwealth Government Minister for Infrastructure, Transport and Regional Development, the Honourary Catherine King, and the Minister for Indigenous Australians, the Honourable Linda Burney, requesting a comprehensive commitment to an extensive consultation process with our First Nations community that ensures the acknowledgement and recognition of history and custodianship is meaningfully incorporated into future planning and naming. And if I also might be so bold, I also submit to you that the correspondents to responsible ministers and geographical names board bear the signatures of not only the mayor, but of each councillor. Thank you for your attention.
Mister Mayor, questions to my colleague councillor Green.
Thank you councillor Green.
Councillor, are you moving a motion in this regard, out of your presentation?
Well, councillor, I'm just seeing whether we can actually move a motion from a presentation. My understanding, you're not able to, but I can't, I'm just checking about that.
You could just raise it as an urgency.
Well, we've, we did discuss a, councillor Caliander had a similar urgency motion, which we discussed, which we couldn't, I couldn't say that there was, there was an urgency about that. And I think, yeah, if council, we can, you know, deal with this at the next council meeting, as a notice of motion, would be the, the correct protocol. If you're happy with that councillor Green.
Passed on the text to, to George. I mean, I think the writing to the nominated ones that I have, in terms of ensuring that there is authentic and comprehensive consultation with our community going forward, that we may not be able to address or to reverse the decision for Bradfield, but I do believe that the geographical names board should at least be aware that it was disrespectful, and that the community is disappointed that they did not receive a reply. And secondly, that, that, you know, that there should be that commitment to properly consult with our community going forward on other opportunities, whether it be in naming, or co-naming, or recognising the custodianship and acknowledgement of country. I think it's very important.
Yes, councillor, and I think everyone commends you on, on your words, what you've just said, and the, your recommended actions, and look forward to discussing it next time. And I think we can, we'll be able to make it, make it happen. We'll now move on to our notice of motion, NOM 1, page 280, tab 29, tender report, recommendation on page 280.
Yeah, look, I just, again, good governance. Thank the acting CEO for his comment. Looks like it's doable.
So you're moving the motion?
I will move it.
Seconder, councillor Caliander. Any discussion? Put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item, 281, public road disclosure register.
Yep.
Move councillor Haggerty.
I will move, and I'll also have a bit of a rant. Case in point.
You need a second there before you can rant councillor.
Thank you for allowing me to rant. On Saturday, I got a call for... Um, on Saturday, I got a call from Joe Campezi, lovely purveyor of fine meats on 15th Avenue at Austral. Um, his shop was dead, there was no one there, there was no one there to about 12 o'clock because, uh, council contractors turned up to do some roadworks, um, which meant that 15th Avenue was blocked, it was impossible to get in. Uh, so this affects businesses and it also affects residents. Um, you know, I regularly get calls from someone going, I, I woke up today to go my usual route, uh, but 27th Avenue was closed, so I had to drive 10 kilometres around the block and go to the back of the queue on 15th Avenue. These people accept that their area is growing, um, but, but I think we can do much better about notifying them about it. We do know it's going to happen because they have to put in a road occupancy certificate. So what I'm suggesting here is we just, you know, list that on the website and then once a month, we have a Facebook post going, here are the, here are the road closures for this month. Um, another example that came up this week, I think we're, we're doing, we're, Greenway Drive, we're fixing up Greenway Drive. Um, good, great, it, it is, I have got complaints about the state of Greenway Drive. Um, I've complained about this, I think, three times previously. Can we not do roadworks during school hours? So that's it, that's my rant, one of my better ones, I think.
Thank you councillor.
Well, Mister Mayor, I believe, uh, just to publish it on the social media, not everyone have social media or look at the social media, I believe number two should be like an electrical sign in advance of the event of the closure as well.
So they already, they already are supposed to notify local residents and businesses and have a VMS. I think we need to enforce that and we can have a chat about the enforcement standard slash policy at some point and whether that's actually being enforced. But in addition to what you've suggested, let's also, um, publish it on the website and push it through social media.
Great, all right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item, NOM three, page 283 with a recommendation, move councillor Caliander.
Yes, thank you Mayor, um, I'll leave the background as well as the briefing.
Seconder.
Happy to second.
Councillor Haddid.
Thank you councillor Haddid. I was going to be very quick, background is pretty self-explanatory, we've had a briefing on it. Um, I thank the council staff for their comments, um, and for exploring this so far. So with that, I will ask, ask for the support of my fellow councillors.
Okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Uh, NOM, uh, zero four, page 285, temporary animal shelter arrangements, Ross Morvet. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I, uh, I thank the acting CEO for making arrangements to go out and have a look at the Animal Welfare League.
Have a second, or?
I.
Oh shit, sorry, second, councillor, no.
Happy to second.
Second, second councillor Goodman.
I thank for the arrangements being made to do the tours necessary to educate councillors more on this matter, and I ask that this matter be deferred until after that has occurred.
Right, so move the council, the, the motion, the deferral, put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. NOM zero five, page 289, lot six, New Bed Road, concrete crusher site, councillor McNaught.
I'd like to move the recommendation, please.
Move councillor McNaught. Seconder councillor Green.
Um, I'm not sure if anyone needs me to talk about this, I'm asking for a report to come back about the, um, the meetings that have taken place from previous, um, NOM that was put up and also a, a report about a council-led solution to this longstanding issue of development along the riverfront there. Um, ask for support for that report to come back and thank council for their work on the motion with me. Thank you.
This comebacks, comes back in the August meeting?
Uh, I've asked for it to come back in the August meeting. I note that the acting CEO has commented that it would be probably coming back in September. If there's any chance of any spare time coming up earlier, I'd really appreciate it as soon as possible. Um, but I understand that there is workload, um, but if we could have.
I thought you were going to ask for the July, July meeting, so.
Did I ask for July?
Any other discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Again, declare it unanimous. Okay, we now move into the confidential items, into the confidential booklet. Now confidential zero one, one, three, seven, one in the confidential booklet. Have a mover.
I'll move that.
Second councillor Caliander, any discussion? No, put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it, uh, carried. Next item is, uh, conf zero two, page, uh, one, three, uh, seven, four.
I'll second.
Move councillor Haggerty, seconded councillor Caliander. Huh? So I heard, I heard councillor Caliander, apologies, but you can have the next one. Um, just before I put the motion, I note that we're paying 500 in the, I know, I can't say that yet, so, but, uh, I would, uh, ask councillors to get their calculators out and, uh, divide the number by the area, which will give you a square metre rate, because I'm going to ask you to do that for the next couple as well. This seems, so just, uh, very interested in the, understand why, but, uh, we can have those discussions offline, but just good exercise for councillors. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item is conf zero three, page one, three, seven, nine, um, with the recommendation there. And I once again ask councillors to bring out their calculators and do the same exercise. Move councillor Haddid.
Second.
Second councillor Harl, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it carried. And the next one is one, three, eight, three, conf oh four. Move councillor Haddid, second councillor Harl, discussion, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, declare it carried. Uh, next item is conf, uh, zero five.
Move that way.
Move the deputy mayor, second councillor Harl.
Doesn't need to be answered now, but can someone explain to me why these are in confidential and the other ones weren't after the meeting? Thank you. We've got minutes for Eric in confidential and then another set of minutes for Eric in the committees.
Hmm, good point.
No, no, just later, it's fine.
He wants to answer it, he's happy to answer it.
I, I could provide an answer now through, through the acting CEO. Um, so there was some detailed discussions around the civic place and there was some commercial discussions, uh, so commercial information discussed and minuted, and on that basis, we've moved it to the confidential's. Um, and, and, and Eric members expect detailed minutes to be, to be kind of documented as part of the stall of their expectations.
Great, next item is conf zero six, where is it? Uh, page one, four, one, one, I'd move that we, where is it? Uh, one, four, one, one, um, that we don't accept, um, we don't accept any of the tenders and point to that we work with the, uh, the newly established, uh, panel in consultation with the newly established recruitment panel to go back out to market. Seconder.
Point of order?
Councillor McNaught.
Can we actually delegate that?
I'll second that.
What we're effectively doing is delegating it to a panel, I, I.
When I, in consultation, it's not delegating, the decision still has to come back to council.
So why don't we just make a decision now?
Uh, I think the, uh, the, the, oh, we might have to go to confidential to discuss it, but I, I think ultimately this is a, uh, for my previous involvement in these, in this process is the panel was involved at this point in time. Um, you know, the panel needs to determine how far the breadth and the width of the, uh, of the, of its scope and search that it wants to go for. And I think, uh, it's important that when going out there to tender, that we're actually tendering for what is in line with the panel's, uh, the panel's view. Any further discussion, councillor Harl?
Yes, I, I understand what you're saying, I've been on those panels too. And I would personally, as a councillor, I would like to see that instead of getting, uh, private contractors to do this, I would like to see the local government association do this for us. I think the local.
Sorry councillor Harl, I just have to point out that we, because it's a going to tender, we can't.
Sorry?
Because it's going to tender, we're not allowed to exclude anyone in particular. Uh, but you can express those views when it comes back.
Okay.
Yeah, in the appropriate way. Right, I'll, I'll put the matter, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. For, that being said, I now declare the meeting officially closed. Thank you everybody.